...started right away and I'd like to go over everybody's here workshop session. And there's some things that I would like to address about some of the committee things. If you can remember who's clerk before they finish this, that might clarify on those. I just went through them and one of the things was the smoke mountain center with regard to having three, but it should only have two, so we'll address that. But we do have agenda items that we have, we have general discussion with anyone that has anything that they would like to share at this time during the workshop. I'd like to recognize right now Andy Cable, he's got a Stanley Recreation and Sequoia Valley Center planning business and I'd like to understand what that's all about and I've been waiting with a very breath on the decision about the grant on that, so.
Well, I have actually several things, but that doesn't start at the time. And in front of you, you all have in the first couple, Mike, towards it on the left side up there. It's the one that starts with the financial report. It is what I did to start this thing off with is I ran, you can pull this online any time you want to because Stanley is a public, we traded company, their financials are already made about it. But what I did is I pulled out the 2012, the year, it's the first, second, third quarter and fourth quarter of 2012 compared to 2011. It shows how they had profited and lost and as you can see, even at the end of the year, they had a little bit of a loss. And that brings me to the topic and what they came to us about was, and also underneath that is the information, is that TGG, which is the Go-Three Group, who they have hired out there to do consulting work to increase their productivity. And they're doing that through something that I know quite a bit about and they're doing that through continuous improvement, Six Sigma, and just trying to change their culture in the plant in order to get more productive workers and to get their products through. So, a couple of weeks ago, maybe a couple, three weeks ago, I took the EDC group out there and we went through one of these training sessions as well to just kind of give them an idea of what was going on. And it was very good to get a tour of the plant and also I took Commissioner Ward, she wanted to go back, she hadn't been a long time and she's going to be part of our EDC board, I think it was. So, I took her back there so later and we went through the plan as well. But what they are requesting is that we go in with them as partners to help pay for the consulting group that is, that is out there at the plant. And in return for us going in with them, they're going to open that participation to learn these skills to the residents of Graham County and also more, more than just residents to the business owners of Graham County and to the county government itself. In order like when they have a cause and event or in a cause and event, it's nothing more than just a week-long intense study of the processes in that plant. Or it may not be just a process in that plant, it may be on the problem-solving skills and stuff of that nature. They do a lot of value stream mapping, which is something the government can, can, you know, do something as well. But they have offered us to be part of this and to help pay for it is the nuts and bolts of it. But in doing that, and the only way the Golden Leaf would ever look at it is if it was open to the, the public, not necessarily the general public, but the businesses in our, in our community and also to our governments. And what I've run off here is kind of the schedule for this and tonight I believe you all will be able to get through all this information and make some, some decisions. But I would ask you to look at it and read about it, at these four pages on that TGG handout that I have. And you can see what the costs are down, down below on the last page for the total of each month. And now, along with each month, you can have about four different training opportunities in that. And it tells you the number of open participants, like for the month available, let's say if we were to do that in the month available, we'd have ten open slots for business owners of the community and also people in the county, you know, to go out and be, and be part of this. Myself, personally, I'm a, I'm a, I am a big, big fan of continuous improvement process. The way that this works and what they're trying to do out there will definitely benefit them in the long run if they're able to be successful. And they're going to do this regardless of whether, whether we help them or not, it's something that they need to do to be successful. But it is an opportunity for us to be part of it as well and you can take some stuff from it. So, this is just basically, there's another request on there that talks about their, their application that was sent to the EDC for about $200,000. I don't see them spending that much and I definitely don't see us investing that much, but you know, we have months there, you can see the monthly totals as it comes out for the resident April May end due. It doesn't add up to that debt request, but I would just want you to consider and look at it. The EDC bid last Thursday, they didn't have enough to take a vote to submit this, but they, they would call a special meeting this week in order to let me submit this to Golden Leaf if you all think there's something that we should do.
Okay. Andy, I have more questions about this.
Yes.
And I know you go forward.
Yes.
Has he had any contact or information about this process?
He, he's on the EDC board. And he has saw this, what, what it does is that he, his, through Tri-County and through the state, they can provide a lot of on-the-job training.
Right.
You know, and take people out of Stanley and bring them over and teach them how to run a lab or CNC computer or whatever, but they cannot do this piece.
Okay.
Which is, is teaching them a different method of thinking about their work, about their job or what they're doing or how to be, instead of, you know, it's just a continuous improvement, this process of removing waste from whatever you're doing. And that's what they're trying to, to get into the minds of people who work out there. And he, he could probably, he could partner with us on some of this for sure.
Yeah.
That was one of the things that came up. But there is also, we would have to, as an EDC contract with this group and not with Stanley. The Golden Leaf, we would have to go to, we would have to pay this group.
You have to raise the TGG?
Yes.
Okay. Not through Stanley?
No. Stanley would pay their portion and Graham County EDC would pay their portion.
Okay. Have you talked to anybody at Golden Leaf?
I have.
And what's their responsibility?
Well, they're, they're pretty supportive of this because they, they know and they want to try to keep Stanley healthy.
Yeah.
And I, I have to write, if, if you all are okay with this and the EDC in turn votes to, to support this, then I'll write a letter to Golden Leaf. And I'm doing this kind of conjunction with the Sequoia Valley Center, the public too, because I want to send a vote at the same time to give them a fair opportunity to go. I think that we'll not do the Sequoia Valley Center on the gym, which is the next thing I'll do because it's public property anyway. I think they'll say, no, we're not going to make a redevelopment inquiry, you know, we're not going to do reconstruction on a building that's public, you know. I think that'll be out of Golden Leaf's hands. But I, for the fairness of it, when the vote for the application were submitted, I want to send them to get it.
Okay. Let me see if I'm getting this wrong.
Okay.
I'm looking at this TGG proposal and it talks about the advance and the training dates. We're not committed to every day.
No.
But if we do on March 25th, there's five days of training and then there's two, two slots of.
For that particular, for that.
They put in for Graham County.
Yes.
And that, two slots that cost $2,700.
Yes.
Okay. And then likewise with 22nd April and so on.
Yes, but you, when you, when you've gone on through there, this, this training is progressive. So, for that first section, which is April, let's just do the 25th to March, you have those open slots for a cause and event. You go down March to April, you're, you're doing lean training, which is just bring, you have four open slots in that section. And on down, you have the root cause analysis and you have four slots open in that section as well for the county. These are all different trainings that we could participate in any and all if they would want it to really. And then the total, if you look for the whole month of March, you have 13 training days throughout and 10 available slots for 10 different people.
Okay. And proposing the fines to come from?
Well, the EDC, yes, for sure.
And you say Golden Leaf's playing ball with you on it?
Yes.
Did you talk to Ed or Lach?
I actually talked to Mark Schorls and Ted Lord. And I, and I still have, have a phone call back to them and a letter that has to go because it has to be handled very carefully if we're going to do this. But I, I just wanted to make you, you all aware of this, of what's going on, the discussion that's going on.
Okay.
The EDC was in support of it the other day to, to do this because they realized the port of it. But they didn't take a formal vote to support it, so I'll have to go back to that. So, tonight, what I've got in here, you all need to take a good look at it.
Yeah, sure. Because this, I hadn't talked to you this, have you kind of hand us around, see who can, who can participate?
Well, me personally, what I, I think needs to happen would be that we use these slots for our government offices as much as possible.
Right.
And the reason I say that is we can use these same principles and tools that they're going to learn in the management of our business. That's why I would do that at least every time we do that, department head from the county, one department would need to be able to discipline in that, we would take.
And I know our human resources person who is also the county manager tonight and also the clerk and a lot of other things, you know, the major standpoint with the emphasis that we've had on the evaluation process and really the responsibility of part of the county to offer employees an opportunity to advance. We, we had a discussion about this and I know we had someone last board me and say, you know, about pay raises for employees and they, there wasn't a pay plan. So, we've gone to one, had a pay plan and tried to build in that where, you know, if you have certification or you're taking courses, there'd be waiting. I think we'll be looking some of that tonight about how to make a career out of this and not be frozen in prayer.
Right.
So, this might work out very well, particularly instructor about department heads.
Well, see, I'm a green belt in this cover and system. I'm like, I was two or three hours away from being a black belt, as high as you can get on this continuous improvement and Six Sigma process.
Okay.
That, I, I did this training for Shaw and I did it for Stanley for a while.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. This, this type of continuous improvement process, that's what I was schooled with. But, and I've learned a lot about it through industry. So, this thing is a very, very important process. Value stream mapping, and you can look at all this stuff up on the internet, get more information, but value stream mapping for any type of business is so important. It takes out, you know, like if we done it for the county, you started, what, all the services we offer and then, you know, what, what has value and what doesn't have value and how we pay for that, you know. It, it goes through a whole process of how you do that and that's what Stanley has to do to be committed. If they don't, then that balance sheet you all with that will not get better at night. So, that they have to. And yes, you're right, it could fit into something very positive. I mean, you can even, even when it talks about this, the Go-Three Group can give certifications of what the people have been training to certain level. You know, you have this much on your toolbox that you open it down each step, it is learning something else on that process.
Now, I haven't looked at this, I'm asking, how far out would this be going? Is it just a gym?
I would imagine that, I would, I would not, us, the county, this is me talking, without the advice of, of my EDC, I would not want to see anything further than that until we saw results on a, you see, well, you know, two quarters of this year are probably a big part in, along to see some performance improvements from, you know, our investment on the change as I.
Okay.
I, I wouldn't want us to commit to a year down the road without seeing some results first.
Right.
But it, like I said, I, you know, I can't, I can't speak to the EDC, they've already improved it because they did and they didn't have a form in their being, so we'll have that special need to go on, but I didn't want to waste that time, a couple of you workshopers kind of, to let you all know about this.
Okay. Well, I'd like to leave some homework, but you know, from the sound of it, it'd be a great opportunity and it fits in with what we're trying to pursue.
Sure, and like, you know, Adam, Coey, up there, those guys that supply the stand right, it'd be worth their time to come.
Right.
Because if Stanley goes through this whole model, like, like Shaw or Z-Graft that coming out this way, they go through this whole model, then, then all their vendors will have to go that way too. You know, there's, there's a, there's a, it's a, it's a all-encompassment way of thinking about your manufacturing system. And one of the best ways to go is back to the Toyota manufacturing system, if you go back to the way they make cars, that's where a lot, a lot of this stemmed from, from their model, they actually in and for and follow the product, the car, and then Toyota took it and streamlined it, took on the waste stuff.
All right. And two, we're trying to get as much information as we can from Southwest Commission with regard to the comprehensive plan for the county and the comprehensive transportation plan. So, there's a whole lot coming today.
Yeah.
And I think you know that and you realize that for some time, just waiting for the shoe problem. So, it'd be great if we could, as a county, you know, include all of this, you know, with, with everything that's going to be transpiring at that evaluation.
Right, and I think, you know, even if, if this one doesn't work, that the county, we start talking about along with the plan, the plan, if you want to talk about, just what you all are talking about, that HR piece of development, your employees.
Right.
And you know, it can be this own model like this because the continuous improvement even works in hospitals, they're one of the biggest places that they do it, you know, because, because of the system of checks and balances and sustaining what you've done.
Okay.
And that's kind of, you know, it's government, you need that as well.
So, there would actually be a performance component in it, evaluation wise?
When I left Z-Graft, Shaw, that I was before, everything that we know was based on this. By evaluation, at the end of the year, you had certain strategic goals that were set by this and, and that's what you were measured to. And you got your evaluation at the, at the end of the year, halfway through the year, you were rated on that criteria. So, I mean, if there was, you know, for my job as economic development, you managed, you know, create as many businesses or what, then it follows according to the overall plan when you are evaluating.
Let me ask you a question. How about tourism to fit in to the model? Or is this pretty much just for production, manufacturing?
It fits in live as a, as a whole philosophy, continuous improvement, it almost is just like, it, it's about every day. I had a guy at my first continuous improvement that gave an example every morning about Earl, in his first place when he started. He said, my wife, she goes to the kitchen and she makes breakfast and she leaves the egg on the counter, this here, this here, this here, this here. He said, I kept watching her do it and he said, I knew that there would be a master way to do it. So, he said, I said, I'll do it one morning. He said, he organized his eggs over here, didn't let him group his garbage can a little bit closer. And he said, you know, he got breakfast done in about 15 minutes quicker than she did, but then he had to do it every morning.
Okay.
But, I mean, there is, it, it works to everything. I mean, it's about removing that waste from, from what you're doing. Like instead of taking 15 steps over to dust up the waste, you move the trash can over and throw it away in the workstation. It works in, in everything.
Okay. All right, well, that's interesting from the standpoint. And coming from the background that you do, if you looked at this financial statement, what's your feeling?
There's room to be improvement. I mean, you can see, if you look through it, you see the first quarter there, where their profits were, they're, they're netting down. The second quarter is skewed by the settlement that they received. Still, there's the third and, and fourth quarter, I really, really think they are very close to, to turning the corner. And the reason I say that is because they have spent a lot of time in training by bringing all the new equipment in. Over the last two to three years, they have brought tons and tons of new equipment in that building and there's courage to learn how to use, you know, it, it doesn't help when your, your sales are, are reducing every quarter.
Well, I'll tell you with, with Golden Leaf even considering, you know, that, that's pretty much the end point, you already know that.
Yes.
You know, they have to make that decision.
Well, and you know, I think they're considering all the fact that, you know, it didn't mean to watch the county for standard to be a big one. And the other thing with the Sequoia Valley Center, you guys, that what they're asking for is money to keep that building, you know, falling down the gym, the one that they're trying to, to fix up, they actually push on money to do that. They've got, and on this, you can look through it, they've got a project over there, they had some addition planning for the $750,000 to redo the gym, make it a, a usable, conviction type center where they can handle a lot of different meetings and things. And they were asking for a hundred thousand dollars from the EDC in order to get the windows replaced and fixed to do it. The EDC was in support of that. I had not got Golden Leaf to look at this yet. Like I said, I would, in fairness to the requests coming at the same time, I want to send them together.
Okay, and one thing that I, that I would like to verify, I remember, I think it's about a year ago, we met with Ed and Earl. And the question that was, that was raised then and is still is on my mind, about the issue of the utilization of the funds. And you know, where we were led, when we went into this process, that it'd be a revolving loan kind of process. And, and then all of a sudden it seemed to turn where, yeah, we could go and spend, you know, the group spent directly into investment and not expect it to be on a revolving loan.
Right.
So, it seems that they're approving more and more of that and trying to go with one. But, you know, what happens is we know that they make the final decision and that's going to be the, the determinant for me.
And I, I think as, as we use that money at the EDC, I think you will see more that it will, it should be in a forgivable loan format where you have a three-year obligation to some type of a four. And even, even the Sequoia Valley Center or us, when we asked about it, it would be retention of some of those, those jobs that are there. And they worked, they were not going to create jobs. And part of the EDC, in my opinion, going forward is to submit applications that are going to create jobs, but normally everything's going to come back. And then I don't disagree with a forgivable revolving loan too, where you have three years to satisfy a certain amount before you pay them money back.
Right.
They give you some home, whatever it is.
All right.
Just, just to, for y'all to look over, the third thing, or the second thing on my list was to ask, and I've talked about it a little bit, that even the budget for economic development is going to not be fully paid out because salary's way to come in for the year in the county. And I was wanting to ask if there was a possibility, if you all would consider this tonight, is allowing me to use some of the money that is actually budgeted for the economic development department of the county to create a website for economic development.
It's permissible, I mean, it needs to be out there, no doubt.
Well, I was, you know, with the community development class last week in Chapel Hill, and that, that one of the speakers that spoke to us was a guy that, that does site visits for counties or, and he was talking about the first thing, no matter if you had a building of a certain amount or this, you, the, the site inspector looks up your county and you don't have a, a usable form of technology like the website, you get marks on the list on the class. So, it's something that we need to consider. I've done, this is kind of a mock-up, but I'll show you what it looks like. It's just, what it is, is it's pretty, in fact, it's, in fact, it's a daughter, it's her daughter, daughter did this before me, but this is just what the first page is economic. I would still be leaning to county side, but I said it itself, Graham County, the assets, I think, on the development side. And on each one of these books, it's kind of a thing, if you, if you go start a business in Graham County, you kind of think outside the box and all your rules are here. So, if you didn't know about your business, it is, you click all this and that, you know, all your, your schools and just our county statistics, all there. Nature's incentive, we get to connect to everything, we have that advantage of being a corporate.
Do you have a ballpark to give?
Well, Wayne Hyde is who, who told me that he would do that for me and he said he could do it. Oh.
I know, I like that. It's great.
Eight thousand. Is that annually?
No.
For Wayne?
Yes.
What do you think?
Yes. He will, he will do for the normal fee that's accounted for. So, it won't be in addition to the county's charge for him or my county for that. And what, or for whoever's in the neck of the belt, but he would have, when he sets this up, he's going to haul that work, set off on forms and stuff on there, point that up, put it on you, have it on page and things like that. But I can get you through all the interviews and, and, you know, supporting that, I'll get a much more, if I'm not.
Well, see, we have ones up for a discussion tonight and also for, for an action, I believe, wasn't it, for that to take place. Okay, this is one other question that I would have and I, I make, it says right here on the rule visitor profile study. Does that have to do with, can you give me an explanation about this? Because does that have to do with the town of Robbinsville, travel tourism?
Yes.
And who was the other? Graham County?
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce. And the one question I had about it, you know, was, you know, the town of Robbinsville, travel tourism, and Chamber, and we're Santa Taitland, Montana, with this.
I think that's a good question. Yeah, we can keep it right back.
I've asked. Well, me personally, you know, because, you know, if you're talking about the issue of, you know, visitor profiles, you know, it seems that, that Fontana Village, you know, just out of the nature of their business and everything else would be a key player.
Well, I was, I was told right before this meeting that Fontana would, would be participating in that.
That is correct. That is correct. They said that yesterday at Traveler.
Okay. All right. Most recent information I had was there were not.
Well, that was about 45 minutes ago.
Oh, okay.
And that, that came out of the listing session that we had with Cherokee Reservation, they came out the day that there's a listing to the community because they're, they're going to drive to Cherokee Reservation and a leadership training program. This is a county, they're going to try to do that. But yeah, I was told they had me, that Fontana would participate in that.
All right, great.
And what this leads to, this plan, I mean, this statistic yet, whether we use this group or not, it gives the, the baseline, I think, for, for the travel tourism to write a, a plan for travel tourism.
All right, great. I didn't jump the gun here, did I?
No, that's fine, we need to go on, go to the part.
All right.
Also, I gave you a, this is just a little bit of something in that package, there's a, there's a list of people and an email that came from Lou Anne Brown. She's our park director, lady that is helping with the park at Stanley. These, if you know anyone on this list or if you would like to write a letter in support and give it to me, this is my mailing list for next week. I have to mail out before April, the first letters of support from our county for the park. So, I just wanted you all to know who I was sending the letter to. And what I plan to do is get, Stanley's going to write a letter of support, so the, the health department, they will do a, a letter of support talking about how it would benefit our citizens. Jason's going to do one and then just several other people, the great organization are going to do one as well. But I just, I wanted you all to have this in case you could use someone on that list or felt like writing a letter that I could send.
Okay. All right. I'll see you.
But May the 10th, we'll know, but we got that, just got that information on when that day did. I'm going probably on that day, so we will be there. I was told when she came out to do a preliminary, or actually her award kind of walked through when she was here a couple of weeks ago, the win, that she felt very confident if we weren't funded in the first round, we'd be funded before the end of the year.
Oh, great.
So.
That's a good one.
Yeah, that's a good one.
I really believe in this.
Also, I wanted to touch on a little bit about the grant with the school for the laptops. I think you have a little bit, or about that, Mike, we, there's an opportunity through the ARC, the county and Southwestern Commission to get a grant for Graham County schools to provide a laptop, refurbished laptop to pretty much the middle school and the high school, every student and every teacher. And it's part of, of a bigger plan to make, you know, for rural North Carolina. So, it's part of that, but there's still some work to be done and there's a huge opportunity for us to do that.
All right, that sounds good. We can just get broadband and that?
Yes, for sure.
So, that's still, that's ongoing?
Yes. I've got two other things I would, Stanley Fiber, that's another thing that I've been working on to get a fiber line at Stanley. It's something that I'll probably come back and help you all about again, once the EDC has decided not to put a formal proposal in there and still work on the nuts and bolts. But we have the ability to put a fiber to Stanley for about $33,000. And that is not a field where we would put ourselves, a whole part of it, the county would be one third of that. If the EDC were want to fund that, that might be something that we actually, Stanley would fund the other part and the provider would find a fund the other. And that gives us a dedicated fiber line in that building that we don't have.
But that'd be tied in conjunction with the proposed POC that they're looking at for bypasses?
The, the POC will tie, you can't do what they need to do by, by sending it over with microwave, the POC will provide. The POC provide, the best explanation I've had about the POC what it does for us is it, and that's still on the table as a long-term plan and also there is a possibility of even And also, there is a possibility of even a, a larger project to get, getting that all the way out to the snow.
Right.
I'll know more about that Wednesday, I have a meeting in South, in Southwestern Michigan about that. But the POC is, is an area where, like, all the data comes in, and it puts it, just have it about ten different rail cars on the railroad, puts it in one, sends that information, sends it on out. So, that POC will provide us that ability, once we get connected all the way around, where you can send more information, and it gives you more efficiency. And it also allows us to turn that to the whole life thing. You shouldn't have to pop it from one sort of side, you know, minus side to the other. Yeah, this is separate, all of this, it is, there's several reasons that it, it makes good sense to get fiber in that building. And all, and I just want to mention it because it's on the table, and I'll probably come back to you all again.
Okay.
And the last thing is, it's called Echo Flexus. It's a, it's a company that contacted me today about a solar field in Grand County, for those solar powered panels. They are in the process of recruiting, or asking for me to send them some information on any property owner for county-owned property that would be used for solar fields. So, if you, if you all know something, they're looking for twenty acres, or they could take less than that, so, that's just something coming along.
And, you know, maybe too, that's, that's an issue right there too, of, and I've been familiar with some of the counties throughout the state that have these farms. And Blue Book County, of course, the one it built for, and, and everything for that. It'd be a hot-button issue, and one of the things that you got to run into with that is, is local ordinance is governing, governing those things. And I'm very cautious in that, but, you know, it'd be great. I wish we could have our own high electric plant, somewhere here in the county, and go and do that, and, yeah. Well, I think if we're pursuing it south, to look at it and see, but we need to make sure, you know, get in a conversation with that, that we have something that we can base decisions on for the county's responsibility. Because you don't want, you know, farms just jumping everywhere throughout the county.
Right.
And it's, and then, you see what happens with, I don't know that there's anything right now, that somebody came to an owner here in the county, which would be fine, and said to them, "Hey, if you want to go ahead and put a solar farm in here."
They, they could do that.
They could do that.
Yeah, and that's, that's why it was nice to see that they actually came through the planning department. And the reason they did it is because, this is what you're talking about, in other counties, there's things in place to say, you came to one certain distance of this, or you can't, you know, we, we probably need to circle back on that.
Wouldn't believe some county would to, some stories about their county accounts.
Oh, well, I mean, that, that, here now, they could just have called somebody that owned twenty acres, and asked behind that, so, that's something that would, in the future, it's in play.
So, are they going to make a presentation, or are they?
They can, I just, what I had to do today was send me their requirements for land, and I, I just got to the day, but I wanted to mention it to you, because they were pretty persistent in trying to get back a hold of me, and I would go, I should fix them. I think that's something that's coming, so we better be thinking about it.
Well, you understand the thought, you know?
Yes, sir.
Alright.
That's all I had, if you all.
One question, y'all, gentlemen, any questions or comments? Andy, I appreciate it very much, and that's a lot of information in that.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's fine, we need it, we need it updated on that, and I'd like to see the progress that's going on with it. At this point, I'd like to, to go, if we could, I guess it's in our package, is it this clerk?
Yes.
The boards that are included in the county?
Yes.
I brought this one from the initial, out of a mailbox, and I went through, looked at this, and I know it's an action item. We do go through action items during the workshop, but I was going down through this, and one, one that I, that I'm familiar with has to do with the Smoky Mountain Millhouse, Tracy Jones' position. And I can, I want to say, I think it's about five, five pages over at the bottom. Greg Cables has replaced that, that position there. We have an action here by this board, Greg would do it, and also he has had a recommendation to Smoky Mountain Center on that. So, Greg Cables has included, and, for replacing Tracy Jones. So, and keep it here to the ground, there's going to be quite a bit of activity going on in Smoky Mountain Center. Western Highlands, which includes eight more counties, there are already fifteen counties that have been excluded in Smoky Mountain Center. And their car is starting to reduce services to counties, and it seems that the western counties are going to lose out again. So, there's a, there's been some talk about, instead of each of the counties that are in the catchment area for Smoky Mountain Center, will not have representation, that they're going to go with a smaller board, which includes one county commissioner. And if Western Highlands, and I believe, and I gotta be careful in saying this, but I think that the state is wanting to look at Smoky Mountain Center absorbing the eight counties, and that would give them twenty-three counties in the catchment area. And I already know how I feel about it, and I'm a voice here, but if, if we keep losing, and we've got one service provider in our county, and yes, you can throw them in a car and take them somewhere else, but as long as that's going on, and I know that they have reduced services to streamline an already hundred and forty-seven billion dollar budget, and then to turn around and say that, well, we want to absorb eight more counties. So, that's where that's at. So, that's all I have to say about that, and I did not see any other things, because we will be voting on this tonight, particularly with the.
HCC BG committee, yes.
Yeah, the HCC BG committee, so, that would be an action item for us tonight.
That's a non-going process that's forming, so.
Right. I'm glad, we talked about updating, and they have had some changes in. Alright, any other items that, two commissioners here, Commissioner Allen, Commissioner Holder, an opportunity to visit with the folks from FEMA. I believe that you saw Larry coming in, I'm hoping and praying that visit went okay. If you'd like to do that, if you may ask Larry to, to, the two gentlemen, who are also with the visiting team from FEMA, might be wanting to add, add some information to the presentation. Louis, favor.
They called me back about twenty minutes after they left. We had three programs given here in that town, and they did visit each one of them on the way out, and said they found no problems in Grand County. While we was talking to me, and I asked them, "Well, where do we go from here?" And he's come calling Susan back, and said that, you know, it'd be a slow process, but we'll go straight back in. He didn't know how fast, he, he wouldn't give me a timeline, but he said, "We'll go right back into the, the, there won't be no probation or period or nothing." As soon as we get here from there, everybody should be available for the FEMA agents. He didn't act like it'd be a long time, you know, but he, he couldn't give you no time.
They just said they could supply.
Correct.
Well, Larry, you know as well as I do, they told us that it would be in the center. And I just want to go in there, because I don't care who hears. To go and say that Grand County has not been cooperative at all in this process, and they go, and I'm, I'm just saying, Larry, alright? And just put it on, and to say that we weren't cooperative in this, this clerk, how many times did you review the document form?
Oh, several times.
And how many do you understand, and did you go and convert from Word over into, what was it?
PDF.
PDF, and then PDF back to Word, and they said they wanted all the ends changed to oars, and then they said, "No, we don't want the ends changed to oars, want the oars changed back to ends." And then they go back and back and forth, and then they go and meet, Senator Burr's office, and go to meetings with Congressman Meadows' office, and then include Grand County. And the state of North Carolina has not been at the table at any meeting that this commissioner has ever been a part of. So, they think the dance is over once we get eliminated? No, I never, you know, I never, I never mentioned the word politics again in my life. That's just not right for Grand County.
Why is there, you know, a reason these, that might have caused this, and Cherokee travel?
You know what we heard first, Mr. Benjamin? That they were, they had a ban on traffic because of this sequestration. Time before that, it was Hurricane Sandy. And I imagine time before that, they didn't know where we live. I was ready to go to Tucker, Georgia, and I was going to take some of yous with me, because this is ridiculous.
I approached him on some of the mitigation monies from that. See, every time there's any type of federal coverage going in for disaster, I certainly presented that. It says, "I have for mitigation, to try to keep the problems from happening later." And it's twenty percent of the amount they get. And he was telling us that he figured it'd be between six and seven, seven hundred thousand dollars on the, go in for per mitigation. And I was going to pursue some of that money as far as getting some of the Creeks State that's got the tribal land, since that's tied in with that problem of our Cherokee. And he was, he thought that'd probably be a pretty good idea, that we might be able to get a lot more interest if we go, perhaps a lot of the, you know, some of these Creeks. And I obviously pursued him about dropping or waiving the fee on the lawnmower's letter of my, we did a Creek after we did the land. And, you know, he couldn't give an answer on that, but he go in the contacts. It's like, you know, if we do the whole Creeks, those sections, you know, they should waive that fee, because we're doing the whole thing in a compact little section, a little piece of property at, so, that's what we're after there.
Well, Larry, you, you're the, you're the contact guy for county, and how do you feel about it?
I think we'll be back in pretty soon.
Okay, well, alright, okay, well, I just want to continue my membership, and go, go forward with what we need to do. I know these two commissioners here have an opportunity to go with them today, y'all have anything to add?
The only, the only reason they were here today, Mike, they come to look at the slide in the park, the family financial bill. That's the only reason they would come by today, on the, on the way out.
I think the contractor found out, found out that the guy was going to be a real four forty-one, and I just come on over. I was offered buying lunch, and I drove him to the center.
They're looking at all those sites, this, this one, just for, that's a lot of park here, tribal lands are looking at. And a little bit of what Andy said about solar farms, there is one, it's already, we're controlling the park here in the county that's a Creeks made. So, and this up here.
Now, where is that, where is that?
Uh, probably a little of Creeks, or something.
Well, again, you know, we have to be very careful in that, you know, with the.
So, there's something, you want to get past, you probably need to look at that, try to.
Okay, we're going to have to ask the guy, listen to that, Commissioner Allen? Well, one thing Commissioner Holder shared with me before we started, that's probably about three minutes before we started, was the prospect of him doing the mapping. Starting the mapping, you know, here for us, instead of waiting for it to come from the coast this way. So, that again, was an assurance that we got.
He told me that he'd follow back up with his bosses, and let me know something, and I'll copy your name too.
The only thing the folks that brought that, Larry, he didn't save me. It can be ten years down the road.
Yep.
He, he left the door open.
And the bystanders we bought, it was in camp, I'm headed this way about three o'clock, so it should be here any time. And I'm at the state office of emergency, emergency services, we need to do the inspection on and everything. So, we should have it up, running by, at least nine or thirty more.
That's true.
I think we have it here.
Right, that's where we would be at. Okay, anything else, comments? Okay, thank you very, very much, appreciate it. Alright, is there any of this, this one, we can discuss? Alright, anybody here, comments? Okay, one thing I would like to mention is, do you know what the tonnage is on the site, I think, for?
Yeah.
How much you gotten? I think it was like ninety-two hundred, did I hear ninety-two hundred?
We got three full deaths this last weekend.
Ninety-two hundred deaths?
Okay, we're up to ninety-two hundred.
With one station, for how many weeks?
The third week, I think, this is the third weekend.
Sounds like a pretty good deal, man. I don't know how it is with you all, and I'm just telling you about, my wife and I own a very small piece of property in the county in Piedmont, and they've been doing recycling for a good time. By the time you recycle, you have very little household garbage, which you call household garbage. And we just started this, and we made our first visit as a family. We weren't able to go the first day, but we went to this last week, and we only have a bag and hand of household garbage. The rest of it, we recycle. And now we're going to have to trip clear right away where to put the recycling until it's open. And now that the fairs, everything else is going to get into it somewhere else, so we're, we're glad with that. Okay, alright, that's about all I have, if anyone else has any comments, anything else? Okay, we have about fifteen minutes, and we have recess, I think, in the middle, and if anybody should show up, we'll reconvene. We have recess between now and five o'clock. Alright, thank you.